Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our final budget and a regular meeting for December of 2020. Mr. Berman, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Emilio.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis. Is muted.
Andy muted.
I'm here now.
There you go. Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Westman.
Here. At this time, I'm going to ask all, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. At the conclusion of the Pledge of Allegiance, would you all remain standing? Chief, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my sad duty to inform you, I'd like to ask you all to remain standing for a moment of silence for Assistant Chief Nick Saba of the Oakmont Fire Company, who lost his life today, a result of pandemic illness. Please offer our prayers for his family, his extended family at Oakmont Fire Company, and his extended family at all the other fire companies. As a fellow firefighter and member, we all mourn this passing, a great leader, great Thank you very much. Please take your seats. We have a proclamation, Dr. Hart, for... You have a proclamation with you?
Yes. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in recognizing significant milestones in the lives of individuals residing in our community. And whereas Achille A. Valerani, also known as Albert Valerani, was born November 29th, 1920, in Castel d'Alama, Italy, Albert has reached his 100th birthday milestone. And whereas Albert moved with his family to the United States at an early age and later attended Lower Marion High School, from which he graduated in 1939, and subsequently enrolled in Drexel's Engineering, Electrical Engineering Program. And whereas, with the onset of World War II, Albert enlisted in the US Army, where he attended the Army Signal Corps School, and later served in England, France, and Germany. While serving in Liverpool, England, and standing at the rim of a crater of a V-2 rocket, Corpor Valerani had the opportunity to speak with the King and Queen of England, who had stopped to survey the damage. Corpor Valerani was later transferred to the Western Pacific at the end of the war in Europe. And whereas, at the end of the war, Albert and his wife Violet moved to Havford Township in 1949, where they raised their son Ronald, and eventually moved to their home on Marion Avenue, where he has lived since 1957. And whereas Albert received his Bachelor of Science degree in Electrical Engineering in 1946 from Drexel, and later returned to Drexel to earn a Master's Degree in Electrical Engineering in 1967. And whereas Albert had a long and productive career for a variety of organizations, including as a project engineer in charge of diesel locomotives, flight testing, aviation, autopilots, and helicopters, were working at basically helicopter, serving as a program manager of several military communications projects, before retiring from the Naval Facilities Engineering Command while stationed at Philadelphia Naval Shipyard in 1996. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havford, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, offer our defense congratulations to Achille A. Valerani, and wish him continued health and happiness, proclaimed this 29th day of November 2020 by William Wexler, President of Board of Commissioners, Gerard Hart, 8th Ward Commissioner. He was awarded this, given this proclamation on his birthday, about 50 or 60 of his neighbors surrounded his front lawn. One of the fire trucks from each of the fire companies came by and saluted him. He had a great day. He was very moved by the whole event.
Thank you very much. It's a great milestone. I hope we're all healthy and happy at that age. A great life well-lived. And thanks for doing that. Thank you to the fire companies that actually showed up in the neighborhood. And I understand he was very, very happy, as were the neighbors. So, thank you, Commissioner. Our next item of business is Assistance Forum, which is 20 minutes of registered speakers and on agenda items. We have several registered speakers. The first is Ms. Hannah Terlich, on the budget.
Give me one second to bring her up. All right, Hannah, you should be unmuted. I don't know if you can hear me.
Okay. Can you see, is this, you won't be able to see me? You'll just hear my voice, like a disembodied voice thing?
Yes.
Is that right? Awesome, because I'm in a hoodie. Okay. Hi, my name's Hannah Terlich. I live at 412 Mill Road, and I'm going to speak specifically about the 38% of the budget, the $18.1 million that is allocated to the Police Department. Looking at other township budgets, it is high. Lower Marion Township, it's 23%, goes to the Police Department. Radnor, 27. Springfield, 33. I'm not going to read more, but the 38% is quite high. I fully understand the retort that 94% goes to salary and benefits, yet I still think that we can do better. We are in the worst economic crisis since the Great Depression. The jobless benefits for people hit by COVID are about to expire in a few weeks. Desperation is going to go up, and desperation leads to people doing things that our system label as criminal activity. When I look at the police logs, which I really appreciate are available for public viewing, I see a lot of shoplifting from Acme and Giant. These are people who are hungry, and to criminalize desperation, to me, seems to be something that is not forward-thinking and innovative. What I would like is for this township to really take an innovative approach to community care, and just allocating the same 38% to the same institution that responds to incidents rather than proactively reducing incidents, to me, doesn't seem to be innovative at all. And I would like the nine elected commissioners to really think big, and to think about utilizing the talent that is in our community. We are a community of social workers, of teachers, of drug crisis counselors, of people who really work with marginalized groups. And to tap that wisdom, and to tap that innovation, would be making us a leader in the region, and following the footsteps of some other regions nationwide, that are really thinking big about how to care for the whole community in a different way. And I really would encourage you to consider thinking about that moving forward. It may be too late for this proposed budget. It probably is, I'm sure it is. But when I look at the five-year plan, to use an expression that I probably shouldn't, the five-year plan doesn't have innovation on the books. It is the same 38%, just jacked up for inflation. And so I really think that now is the time to think in the future about what you can do as leaders to do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our second registered speaker is Michelle Albrecht, concerning the Vermont Road purchase. Berman, is she on there?
I see her name, and I'm working on it.
Yes. I'm here. I just had to unmute. Michelle Albrecht, 134 Hastings Avenue. I want to commend and encourage all commissioners on approving this ordinance, P-31-2020, in favor of purchasing 1744 Vermont Road, which is a major connection for the Darby Creek Trail, and I think it's a wonderful expenditure, an appropriate expenditure of the proceeds from the sale of 599 Glendale Road, as was determined that we must reinvest it in open space and parks and so forth. And I just think it's a great opportunity, and I encourage all the commissioners to support that opportunity. And knowing that this homeowner has had a great deal of trouble with flooding due to the Darby Creek Trail, I think this is a win-win situation for both the homeowner and the Township Parks and Recreation Department. I would also like to add that I'm very positive about the fact that you are voting tonight on the lighting bid for Veterans Field, which is within our capital projects. And again, I'd like to thank you for supporting Parks and Recreation in making Havford Township one of the best townships in the state of Pennsylvania for Parks and Recreation. And you, the commissioners, can take credit for that, as well as Brian and Tim Denny before him, for supporting all of the open space and facilities for our outdoor recreation facilities. So, thank you very much, and I encourage you all to vote positive.
Thank you very much, Ms. Albrecht. Our third speaker that's going to connect in via the conference is Mr. Richard Kerr, also speaking in favor of 1744 Vermont.
He's head of Friends of Havford.
Yes, hi.
Hi, Rich.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Richard Kerr. I live at 18 Meadows Lane, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Friends of Havford Trails. We enthusiastically support the adoption of the item on tonight's agenda concerning the acquisition of 1744 Vermont Road. Acquisition of this property will make possible two major accomplishments. First, it will fill a missing link and create a continuous gateway of public land along Darby Creek, excuse me, Greenway. This will extend from Township Line Road and State Road in Upper Darby Township, all the way north to Old Westchester Pike and Hilltop Road near the Barnabes Restaurant. So, it's a missing link, and will complete an important section of our parkland. It is a parkland purchase. Secondly, it will make possible an extension of Havford's existing section of the Darby Creek Trail, south to Pilgrim Gardens, Drexel Hill, and beyond. This critical acquisition has long been sought, but a chance to acquire it in 2014 was missed. We should not miss the chance again, especially with the seller who was cooperating with the township. The present Darby Creek Trail opened in 2013, and since then has experienced ever-growing use by all age groups. An activity counter on the trail, installed by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, has tallied about 70,000 users annually in 2017, 2018, and 2019. With the trying conditions brought on by the COVID-19 epidemic, 2020 has witnessed an explosive growth of use in the trail for safe outdoor recreation. October 2020's rail count was up 124% over October 2019. That's more than a doubling of activity. November 2020 trail activity was within sight of tripling, up 182% over November 2019. The Darby Creek Trail is the most-used recreational facility in Havford Township. The Friends of Havford Trails has worked with the township and its engineering firm to revisit this opportunity to extend the trail. We have developed the present plan, for which grant funding is being sought, which greatly reduces the costs estimated back in 2018. The property acquisition alone avoids an estimated half-million-dollar price tag for a pair of bridges over the creek to Marple Township and back. Using existing pathways in Merry Place will save further money, as well as simplification of moving the planned trail away from the creek's edge and closer to Glendale Road and Vermont Road. Our Friends Group is poised and waiting to contribute $30,000 in order to bridge the gap between what the township can pay and what the seller wants. As a nonprofit, our only income is from public donations. This represents a major commitment on our part, but we feel strongly about how much the trail means to us and to the people of Havford Township. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kerr. Berman, are there any more Zoom speakers, or is it...
No.
Okay. We have several constituencies have provided written comments. I have at least four, or five, sorry, five, concerning the Brookline School that I will now start to read. Our first is Ms. Susanna Baruko, from 805 Clifford Avenue in the Ardmore Section. Honorable Commissioners, I am writing to express my support for the plan to contact the school board to ask if they would be amenable to a for-profit use of the Brookline School, and encourage the commissioners to continue to investigate this option. As shown in Commissioner Hart's presentation/ report on the work of the Ad-Hoc Committee, schools are imminently adaptable buildings, and the Brookline School is in very good condition, in spite of what has been said. Any developer new use would expect that new systems in an elevator would be required. While the commissioners agreed that the Parks Commission would have an opportunity to show plans for creating a park at the site, the commissioners have also noted that the parks have been neglected, and that $2 million has been borrowed to begin to address these deficiencies. I urge the commissioners to have vision for the Brookline School, and consider how its adaptive reuse can benefit the community, freeing up funds for existing parks, providing a future tax base, and contributing to environmental stewardship. Thank you, Susanna Baruko, 805 Clifford Avenue. The next comment is from Ms. Katie Begandy. Dear Commissioners, I read in the recent edition of the Havford Newsletter that the strategic plan has been put on hold indefinitely due to the pandemic. Given that this plan is on hold, should you also, should you also hold on plans for the former Brookline School? From last month's Commissioners' Meeting, it sounds like there are only two options being considered for the property, a park or an apartment complex. Yet, without the strategic plan, what data have you used to narrow in on a use for the property? It sounds like the two options for the use of the property are based on a desire to either demolish or preserve the building. This process seems a bit out of sequence. I would rather know that you've considered the needs of our community first to determine the most optimal use of the property. And once a need has been aligned on, then you would proceed in determining how to meet that need, with a preserved Brookline School building, with a demolished and rebuilt building, or simply with open space. If you are making decisions based upon preserving the building or not preserving the building, without first understanding the needs of our community and soliciting community input, then we've gotten off course. As a resident, I certainly have my own opinion on about how I'd like to see the property used. But at this moment, I care less about how the property will be used, and more about the decision-making process. Leveraging data from the strategic plan is an imperative first step in making the best use of the vacant property at the site of the former Brookline School. It is worth noting that this property is within walking distance of both Havford Middle School and Havford High School. Will you have another chance to find a property that is so close to the heart of Haverstown, and that could meet the needs of our community so well? And so I ask that you leverage data from the strategic plan to guide your decision-making process for the use of the former Brookline School. I also ask that you publish a rough timeline for key decisions regarding both the strategic plan and the use of the former Brookline School, so that the community can be engaged in the decision-making process. Thank you, and happy holidays. Our next comment, to whom it may concern, please include this comment regarding the Brookline School for your record. As a resident of Havford 81, and living in close proximity to the Brookline School, I applaud the plan to explore adaptive repurposing of the building. Please vote to pursue any required approvals from the school district to advance a formalized bidding process for the property and building. Not only does this make sense from a residential perspective, but much could be gained from providing experts and professionals the opportunity to generate a vision for the Brookline School that would utilize the building and provide a benefit to the community, not only as a future tax base, but on multiple levels, like environmental stewardship, historic preservation, community engagement, job creation, et cetera. Thank you, Rebecca Timmey, 1201 Edgewood Road, Haverstown. Next comment. Dear Board of Commissioners, they say that one person's trash is another person's treasure. I would like to urge the Board to start thinking upon the Brookline School as a treasure in the community and a lucrative asset. It's not only a few select residents or history buffs who feel this way. Quite a few developers and those who know the business of adaptive reuse are excited about the possibilities this building holds. After this disastrous financial year, it's time to think about making some money of what you might consider an albatross, and moving this project forward. If the school district has not been approached yet to discuss subdividing the parcel and selling the building to a developer, it appears to be high time to make that call or to set up that Zoom meeting. The township seems to relish in the fact that it's becoming attractive to young families. Many of these young families coming into Haverstown are coming from the city where the hipster ethos, parentheses, neither, which neither you nor I can probably place ourselves in, close parentheses, puts a heavy emphasis on exactly such historic spaces. Just walk around Old City, dine atop the box school building, look at the industrial spaces along the Delaware and Brewery Town and Chinatown. So many older buildings are being converted into beautiful, chic, residential, and public spaces, and are highly sought after. New residents to our township are coming from these neighborhoods, and value that ethos to a greater extent than you might. In these uncertain times, instead of spending money to demolish this treasure, let's change our focus and start to think of ways we can actually gain some income from it. Let's switch gears. Please consider this a treasure worth saving for the benefit of the entire township. Colette Bannon, 334 Sagamore Road, Haverstown, Pennsylvania. The last comment on the school. Dear Commissioners, I write in support of seeking an adaptive reuse approach for the Brookline School building. I believe all avenues to save this historic structure should be pursued, and township dollars should not be used to demolish a building that could, in the opinion of developers, be repurposed into housing or other uses. Sincerely, Jesse H. Pointon, AIA, 2525 Ockott Avenue, Ardmore, Pennsylvania, 6th Ward. I have two more comments to read. First one is from Mr. Eric Horst, concerns the Police Department. I would like to submit the following comment for consideration at this evening's Havford Township Board of Commissioners' Meeting regarding recent events concerning the Havford Township Police Department's relationship with Robert "Skippy" Carroll. I am also copying Havford Police Department Chief Fiala, as I would like to be sure that he reviews and considers these concerns as well. I have to make a comment. This was submitted a long time ago, was, came after the deadline. So, this email is actually dated June 8th, 2020. During the last week, Sergeant Robert "Skippy" Carroll of Media Borough Police Department, who is currently serving as First Vice President for the Delaware County Fraternal Order of Police, which represents police officers serving in the Havford Police Department, issued inflammatory and threatening remarks directed toward Delaware County businesses on FOP Lodge 27's Facebook page, and even more inflammatory remark on his personal page. Given that Mr. Carroll is a police officer authorized to carry a firearm, and an individual with a prominent public position with the Delaware County FOP, it is my belief that Mr. Carroll's remarks were intended to, and in fact, did have a chilling effect on the First Amendment rights of all Delaware County citizens to express their views on police reform. In addition to his role as leader of the union, which represents members of the Havford Police Department, I have also noted that the Havford Police Department's official Twitter account currently follows Mr. Carroll's personal Twitter account, which he used to falsely imply that a Philadelphia restaurant represented a threat to the, quote, "safety of police officers," before deleting the comment. People have noted that he's also made comments from one of his personal social media accounts, which appear to advocate for the excessive use of force by police. Many have also noted that in 2018, Mr. Carroll also bizarrely spoke out publicly against a T-shirt distributed by an elementary school in Rose Tree Media School District, which was meant to promote the 50-year anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr.'s Poor People's Campaign, as somehow representing an attack on police officers. Given his prominent position regarding Delaware County police officers, including members of the Havford Police Department, I believe it is imperative that the Havford Township Police Department issue a statement directly repudiating Mr. Carroll's remarks, as was done by the Upper Darby Police Department last week. I also believe that Havford can and should take it a step further, and call for Mr. Carroll to step down from his position with the FOP, as his public presence is doing a disservice to Havford officers being represented by Mr. Carroll and FOP Lodge 27. Havford Township Police Department's apparent association with Mr. Carroll sends mixed messages about the department's commitment to necessary reforms. I would strongly urge the department to take immediate steps to distance itself from Mr. Carroll. Thank you. Eric Horst, Haverstown resident. Our last public comment is from Mr. Anthony Morinelli, to the Commissioners, Township Manager, Parks Commission. Please read this at the Township Meeting, December 14th, 2020. Subject: Tree planting along Caricon. Before all, I apologize that I missed the volunteer planting date. Once again, Havford Township has demonstrated its poor knowledge of our history and its indifference towards its preservation. This time, however, is not just a question of history, but one of the environment as well. Despite historic documentation that willow trees were grown along the creek, and that the willow was essential to the operation of the mills, not one willow tree was among the plantings made last week along Caricon Creek. Not only is the willow a lost part of our history, but the willow is the recommended tree for creek bank preservation by the environmental agencies and universities of numerous states. Yes, the planting of trees along the creek is to be applauded, but why was it done without proper and thorough historic research? As I understand it, the tree selection was made by an environmentalist. But was that environmentalist aware of our history? Did he or she know of the historic importance of the willow? Then too, as an environmentalist, was he or she familiar with numerous studies indicating the role of the willow in creek bed preservation? Maple, sycamore, tulip trees, and birch are certainly good plantings and deserve a place along Caricon. These trees, however, do not reflect the history of the creek, nor are they particularly known for stream preservation. I presented a full historic and environmental foundation for the planting of willow trees, and that information was dismissed. I make no pretense of being an environmental professional, but I am a professional historian, an academic researcher, and I do my homework. Yet even with full and accurate historical and environmental documentation, the information presented was ignored. Could not willows have been included in the planting project? Furthermore, the neglect of the willow is more troublesome by its absence in the area, just opposite the sorely neglected Powderhouse, the last vestige of the once-prosperous mills that depended on the willow. A planting of willows opposite the Powderhouse would not only recognize its historical place, but would also serve as a teaching element if the Powderhouse is considered for badly needed preservation, if ever the Powderhouse is considered. I cite again but a few of those references I presented. The historian Eckfeldt's invaluable account of Caricon and the mills noted, quote, "Along the banks grew massive gnarled willows and other trees which sought the nearby water, while the sloping banks were adorned with masses of glowing ferns and patches of the yellow celandine," close quotes. Eckfeldt also notes how the willows were used for making charcoal for the operation of the mills. Quote, "At this section, the lane passes through a more open space, the sides of the road being lined with old willow trees, as were the adjoining fields. These trees had been planted in every available space for rapid growth. They were annually trimmed, and the wood used for the purpose of making charcoal," end quote. In terms of the environment, from the Penn State Extension, we read, and I quote, "Willow trees grow well in areas with moist soil, and they are used to control erosion along steambank, stream banks, and waterways, where their roots reach into the soil and provide stabilization," end quote. And the Willow Project at SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry clearly establishes in their introduction, the... establishes in their introduction, the willow is an ideal plant choice, many other environmentally friendly systems such as living snow fences, buffer strips, stream bank stabilization and other forms of ecological engineering. Can the historical importance and the environmental value of the willow be any more clearly demonstrated? Yet our township seems oblivious to the records of history and advice of science. The lack of concern is further demonstrated by the lack of an overall environmental and historic plan for Caricon Creek. Why was Haverford Mountain, quote, "star rock" and isolated mini ecosystem been left to the encroachments of invasives? Where are the historic markers that tell the story of the mills? And most important, why in all these years has nothing been done to preserve the Powderhouse? Where is this body's carefully researched interest in the restoration of Caricon Creek? Indeed, even this recent tree planting results not from the interest of the Township Commissioners, but from the initiative and prompting of the few neighbors who gave their time and work to liberate much of Caricon Creek from the overwhelming growths of knotweed, porcelain vine and other invasives. Where this body's heartfelt sincere and invested interest in the history of the birthplace of the township and the gifts of nature were surrounded? How many projects and programs will be carried out without a thorough knowledge of our history and an appreciation of our treasured sites? This township has already lost far too many of its historic, far too many of its historic. When will this township take the time and interest to learn? Tony Morinelli, Hartford Hall, Mill Road. He cites references from Penn State Extension and State University of New York and historian Eckfeldt as basis of his comments. That concludes our public comments. I've exhausted my voice, I'm afraid. So we will address most of those questions, the budget questions that Mrs. Tarlish presented. Commissioner or Chief Viola, do you want to address any of the comments that were directed for the Police Department? I think you're probably the most qualified to address that if you'd like to. If not.
I could address a couple of things. The speaker spoke about the shoplifting. It's not entirely true what her statement was. Shoplifting at supermarkets has been going on for as long as I've been here. It has not risen during the pandemic and during its unemployment time. If you look at our shoplifting stats, you look at the people or the thieves who go into Lowe's and walk out with thousands of thousand dollars worth of tools and walk out with air conditioners or go into supermarkets and get shopping baskets full of detergents so they can sell them for drugs. So the people who are stealing in the supermarkets are not hungry people. They are just downright thieves. So and as far as the budget items, as far as our operating budget, our actual operating budget is only 6% of the total police budget.
Thank you, Chief. And I do follow your written reports as most of us do, and the addresses of those that do the shoplifting are not from residents of our township that we could intervene with socially, with behavioral. They typically are in the 1-9-1 zip codes, not.
That's correct, Commissioner, and the ones we do encounter normally have multiple risks for shoplifting with a long history of it.
Correct. Thank you very much, Chief. We will be debating, the other items will come up in normal discussion, the budget, Vermont Road and the trail. So I think we're in good shape. So thank you all for your comments. We appreciate public input. I read, the one comment was long, but I feel that in the pandemic, people need an outlet and three minutes was, we gave them six minutes, so we're being generous because there wasn't a whole plethora of people to there. So thank you all for commenting and we thank you for your attention and dedication to our government and your oversight to us. Item number four is the budget hearing and adoption.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I would suggest just one shift to the agenda before we adopt, before we take on the 2021 preliminary budget, and that is, I think it's probably appropriate for us to adopt the minutes from the preliminary budget hearing before we introduce the final budget discussion.
We can do that.
So even though it's part of the same thing, I just right now would move that we approve the, we approve the minutes from the special budget hearing from November, the, sorry, from November the 16th at 7:00 PM.
I agree. That seems more appropriate in the budget portion of the meeting this evening. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the preliminary budget meeting minutes of November 16th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any, go ahead. Any comments, corrections, deletions?
Hey, Bill.
Yes.
Don't we have to move it on the agenda first and then?
I think, I look at this as it's an oversight. It should be part of the budget hearing.
Okay, all right.
So I think that it does make sense. I'll agree with Mr. Holmes for once that it does make sense, part of the budget hearing.
So easy.
So yeah, it's common sense.
Okay, all right.
It was a typographical error and it should be part of this meeting.
So the one thing you agree with me in all these years is a no-brainer. Is that what you're saying?
I agree with you this evening, Mr. Holmes. Any changes to those minutes?
That I saw.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Familia.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Teagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Okay, thank you for that, Mr.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the 2021 preliminary budget as our final budget as presented on November the 16th with no changes.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion.
Mr. President, sorry, we've been, I'll wait, sorry.
No, I just, my question might be the same as yours, Commissioner Holmes. I just wanted to review, because we've had Victor Denae and others from the Environmental Advisory Committee offer their suggestions on the solar project. And I had a conversation with Amy Cuthbertson, our Finance Director and Assistant Township Manager this afternoon about those projects, and I thought it might be helpful, although I understand we don't make this decision tonight. It's basically a line item in the budget and will be decided by, in terms of how the projects will be, what's the scope of the projects will be and when they'll be let will be decided, you know, at some future point by the Board next year. But maybe Amy could just brief us on where we are in terms of the solar project and where it is in the budget.
Thanks.
Sure. As was discussed during the budget hearing, we do have a provision or a plan if it's the will of the Board to do a solar project. We did speak a little bit about locations, and I think when the time comes, the locations might want to be looked at a little bit more closely. Some of the proposed locations might not be as attractive as others. So again, there is money in there as a planning tool to, if that's the will of the Board, but the Board will decide that path next year when they instruct staff to advertise projects such as those, design projects such as those, and eventually award bids such as those.
And how much did you, did you have a half million dollars in that? Or when we go to do a brief financing or new financing, a half million dollars has been kind of a.
We did, again, just for planning purposes, but we have $500,000 in the 2021 budget and another 500,000 in 2022 that would be funded theoretically through bond proceeds as part of a larger borrowing that would really pay for the library project when that comes to fruition sometime in 2021.
Right. And let's be clear, what we're talking about at $500,000 in 2021 is, is the borrowing. The cost to the township, if we go ahead with the project, is just the debt service for however much one annual payment would be for the projected length of the borrowing we would use for solar. And since solar projects are 20, 25, 30-year projects, you know, we'd be talking about debt service. We wouldn't be talking about a $500,000 expenditure of Haverford Township Avenue next year. We'd be talking about just the debt service associated with a $500,000 borrowing. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure I follow that.
Well, what I mean is that we don't, we have, it's not going to cost the township $500,000, should do a $500,000 solar project next year. It's just going to cost the township whatever the debt service is.
Right.
On one year's portion of what is going to be the lifelong borrowing.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't mean to be thick. And on that topic, Mr. Lewis, I was going to bring this up later, but I'll at least address it now. I think it would make sense for us as a Board in January at the reorganization meeting, after we have done the appointments to all of our standing Boards and Commissions, I'm going to recommend that this Board create an ad hoc Board, Advisory Board, simply for the purpose of this solar project and that we combine several Commissioners along with several people from the, from the organization that advocated for the solar project and then perhaps also invite in somebody from PFM or somebody, one of our financial advisors to give us specific advice and good data and help guide us toward making the right decisions and doing this project correctly. So it's not something we have to decide right now, but it's something I wanted to put out to all of you and to the public as what I think would be a smart move for purposes of taking advantage of the really excellent knowledge that we all gained from the people who advocated for this project over the last several meetings.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. The only other thing I wanted to question, and maybe Amy could address this as well. We had talked about trying to bolster or supplement our expenditures in terms of upgrading, improving our park system, expanding upon what we've already done. And I think, is it true that we have another 2 million allocated for park and rec improvements to be decided at some point in the future as to what those projects will be?
I would use the word planned more, again, as part of the larger borrowing that we anticipate happening at some point during 2021. There is a portion of that that's allocated for or planned for park projects. Those projects, I'm sure the Park and Rec Department has a master plan as to what they think those projects will be. Some may be deferred, some may be accelerated depending on need. And Brian, feel free to jump in on the timing of your projects, but yes, there is funding in the next borrowing, as well as there's still remaining funding that is earmarked, but still yet to be spent as part of the last funding.
Great. That's, that's good news. Pleased to hear that. Maybe, Brian, do you have any comments?
Yes, I think Amy explained that well. We still have the 200, 2 and 1/2 million that was borrowed has either, we spent, closing in on about 1.6 million has already been spent and you're going to, there's a budget on an item tonight for lighting of veterans, and then there's a couple other big projects that are going to take up the balance of that 2 and 1/2 million. And there are other projects that we are identifying currently for the 2 million that we had initially planned as part of a $4 and 1/2 million capital campaign.
Okay. And can you just touch upon the Caricon Little League lighting of that field and what your thoughts are, how are we going to approach trying to solve that issue?
Yes. Well, again, as when we spoke at the last meeting and at our previous Park Board meeting, the Caricon Little League came and asked about lighting for their facility. We explained it wasn't in the initial, in the plan for the 2 and 1/2 million that we're currently spending, and we said that that plan, I mean, that project could be considered with the next round of funding.
Okay, but we, is the sense of the Board that we would at a minimum pay for the rental of the lighting to get them through the 2021 season? I just want to throw that out. I think at a minimum, we should, we should cover that cost. I don't know how the rest of the Board feels. I'm just offering a suggestion.
I mean, I think that's just for Parks and Rec to come to us in the spring and say, we've determined prices on what it would cost to rent equipment for the, for the season and to, and to take it out of their budget. At this point, Mr. Lewis, I'm very reluctant to add any money to this budget considering what we talked about at the first, at the preliminary budget hearing, that we've gone into reserves here due to the assessment changes in the township and due to basically these once-in-a-lifetime catastrophe that we're going through. And I think to the extent that Caricon, that the Recreation Department is aware of what they want to do, if the Recreation Department is able to do that with what they have, they should do it, but I'm very reluctant to add anything to this budget.
Okay. Hopefully. I'm sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
Go ahead. You guys can, you can finish the conversation.
No, I'm, I'm done. I just, I think it's something we should, we should consider, and I know Brian and Amy will try to find a way, if possible, they'll find a way to do it. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just say, I mean, the way, the way this is being described in terms of the money that we're borrowing for these projects, and then I understand that we've tried to maximize the use of the dollars by allowing, by using our own employees to do projects that we could. But, you know, projects such as the major projects that you're, we're going to vote on tonight in terms of lighting Veterans Field or, you know, if we talk about lighting Caricon in the spring, those are projects that aren't going to be done by our Parks and Rec employees. And I'd like maybe, if we're authorizing this money, to sort of identify what the plans are for these projects and the ones that are going to be done by outside contractors that we have to bid anyway, there's no sense in not doing all of them, right? Like, I mean, if we're borrowing the money, if we're planning to borrow the money, we should spend the money when we borrow it. It doesn't do us any good to borrow the money and then have it sit in our accounts. So I would just ask that as we look to the planning for 2021, if, if we identify Caricon Lights and their support for that, and we can identify them as projects that are going to be bid out to outside contractors anyway, they should, those projects should be brought before this Board.
Well, Kevin, in 2021, we have the replacing the turf field, replacing crack exercise equipment, electricity and lighting in Veterans Field, replacing lighting at turf field, and depending on what happens tonight, expanding, well, I guess we're going to expand the Darby Creek Trail no matter what happens with Vermont property. And those, that adds up to 275, 255, 25, 675, 775. So I have 810,000 right there. If we're at 1.6, that's 2.4, that's the rest of the money we have.
Right. And we just talked about how there's an additional 2 million that's planned to be borrowed. So what, all I'm saying is that if we're going to borrow that additional 2 million and there's projects that are going to be done by outside contractors, there's no, there's no rule that says an outside contractor can't take on a project for lighting while they're doing, another outside contractor is doing a project regarding the turf field, right?
Well, I don't think anyone's suggesting that they can't do it, but let's go ahead and get real, you know, we can get that real data and Park and Rec Department can come back to us and say, here's our, here's our next 2 and 1/2 million dollar wish list and we'd like to start working on the projects tomorrow or start like working on the projects next month.
That's all I'm saying is, if that's the plan, let's, let's.
I don't think anything, and I don't think anything we're doing tonight would prevent that, Kevin.
I understand. I know. And what I'm saying is that I think, sort of echoing what Commissioner Lewis is saying is that, you know, if, if we're all in agreement and we're all in agreement that that additional 2 million is going to be borrowed for the benefit of Parks and Rec, I would like to see some of those projects, particularly the ones that are not going to be done by our employees.
Moved up.
Moved up and brought before us so that the money can be spent. Yeah, that's all. I'm not asking for, I'm not asking for additional money or anything like that. I'm just saying, this is the money that's in our budget, and if we're not going to be doing it ourselves.
Yeah.
Put out the bid.
Yeah. I agree completely.
And I understand that bid will not go out tonight, Commissioner Holmes. I'm not suggesting it. I'm just saying that there should, which to go out in the spring.
I didn't think you were. Yeah, for the record, I didn't think that's what you're advocating for either, okay?
So Brian, is that, is that unrealistic? What Commissioner?
Well, a couple things about that.
It seems like if you're not doing the work in-house, it's pretty, you can easily manage
That's correct. We can do that. The project would have to be engineered. In order to do the bid, the project had to be engineered. The event, the veterans project was a pretty complicated project. Caricon might be a little simpler than the veterans project. But again, we're working on multiple projects, both with our township engineers and also our township staff. Again, we can identify these projects. Right now, there is no funding for that project though. So if the funds are allocated in 2021, we could identify new projects that can be funded during that time. But my understanding, and again, is that only the 2, the original 2 and 1/2 million has been funded, and we're waiting on borrowing that's going to happen in 2021.
Has, has been funded and, and going to be spent. So.
And going to be spent. In fact, all of that is earmarked in the projects that, that Commissioner Holmes was, was reading through. So yes, we can do what you're proposing. It always takes a little more time than, than just saying, oh, we're just going to throw a bid together. The engineering has to be done, you know, and then the steps that go through that process, and that does take some time. Again, once the funds are allocated, we know they're available, we can start that project forthwith and get them started right away. But until the funding's allocated, I think it might be premature to start those projects.
Brian, I, I think though, you're getting a clear message that, that the time is soon to come up with the next list of projects and come up with reasonable estimates of what you think they cost. And to the extent that they're large engineered projects like the, like the veterans field lighting project is, get as much information, as much data on that as possible. We may not, you know, we, we, we're not adding any much money to the budget tonight, but at any time in 2021, if the climate is right, and if Parks and Rec were to come up with its new wish list of stuff that's, it wants to do, and we've committed all the money that we have, it's nothing that stops us from considering this in 2021. So I would say now is the time.
Yeah, we are actually, our plan in talking with, working through Pinoni and with the vendor that ultimately hopefully be awarded the project tonight for veterans, to talk to that vendor about just what we're talking about. Scope of work for two other lighting projects, the one at Caricon and also the one at the reserve.
And I think it's really important for the, for, for us on this side to realize, we, we need the information from, we need the recreation department to tell us the order in which they want to do these things. You're the folks who understand the bigger picture in the entire township as to what projects need to be won, what should be prioritized, what shouldn't be prioritized. I mean, we may come back to you with a specific project, you know, that we've taken special interest in, but the, the information really should come from the rec department to us. Tell us what your priorities are, what, what's next, where these things fit into it, and the board will respond.
And our expectation is early next year, we will identify those projects that we would have, that we had, you know, put into the batter's box once new funding was available.
Great. Great. Thank you, everyone.
Are there any other changes or questions on the 2021 budget? You had mentioned during the work session, the first meeting, about the fire companies. Is there any comment on, on the?
Yes, I asked if maybe we could contribute or increase their allotment, which hasn't been increased in, I think it was 12 years. But it's up to this board to do something.
I would defer to the budget people. I, I know, I.
Mr. President.
It's a tough year with the pandemic and not doing a tax increase and using our reserves currently, but I'll leave it up to the ones that go through this with a fine tooth, Mr. Holmes.
I, I, yeah, all I'm suggesting, Mr. President, is that we, we've, we have undertaken a serious effort to preserve as many jobs in the township as we can, to preserve the level of services that we provided. At the same year we're dealing with the pandemic, we also dealt with a countywide reassessment. We are dipping into our reserves for the first time in my lifetime to try to keep our, our, our taxes, keep them from increasing. And I don't think any request, I, I don't think any increase in, in any area is appropriate. And that's why I've taken a much stronger position on the Caricon issue than I did even several weeks ago. But also, I, there, 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 there has been no request from any of the five fire departments to our township manager or through the fire committee or anybody for this money. And so I just don't think at this time it's appropriate. And I, I would, I would not accept that change to the, to the budget at this point.
Any other questions? Mr. Berman, would you please call the roll on the? Would you approve, please?
No.
I don't think he heard you. Mr. Aliva.
Oh, yes.
You're muted, Dave.
Yeah, Dave, you're muted.
Dave, you're muted.
Thank you. Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item B, ordinance P2620, or rental charge.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I move we adopt the final reading of ordinance number P26 of 2020, authorizing the imposition of the annual sewer rate in the amount of $4.55 per 1,000 gallons of water consumed.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilia.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item C, ordinance P27, 2020.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I move we adopt the final reading of ordinance P27, 2020, establishing the annual trash fee at $245.
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilia.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item D, resolution 2204.
Mr. President, this needs a little explanation if I, if.
Go ahead and read it and explain it.
Deluge me. So it's adopting resolution number 204 of 2020, fixing a revenue neutral preliminary tax rate for the 2021 tax year. Now, it's going to turn out that this tax rate that we adopt in this resolution is going to be the very same tax rate that we put in E, the tax levy. The reason for that is because of the reassessment, one of the conditions on the reassessment was that it had to be revenue neutral. So we first had to reestablish a rate based upon the new values of all, of all the taxable property in Havreford Township. And then once that new rate was established, it was from that new rate that we as a board would have to consider an increase or an decrease, or keeping that rate the same for 2021. And as people know from our conversations about this, after adjusting the rate to a revenue neutral new rate, which is approximately half of the old, of the old rate, we will then be setting the tax levy for 2021, which will not vary from that new revenue neutral rate. So I recommend we adopt the resolution.
Okay. Would you read it, please?
Yeah, yes. Sorry. I'll read it quickly. Resolution, the township of Havreford fixing a revenue neutral preliminary tax rate for the 2021 year in compliance with requirement of the consolidated county assessment law for the year following the implementation of accounting wide reassessment. Whereas the county of Delaware was ordered by the Delaware County Court of common pleas to conduct and implement accounting wide reassessment of all properties located within the county. And whereas the county completed such reassessment calendar year 2020, and the revised assessments for real properties located within the county shall take effect for the 2021 tax year. And whereas section 8823 of the consolidated county assessment law requires that for the initial year in which a county wide reassessment becomes effective, each taxing district levying its district, its real estate taxes on the revised assessment rule for the first time, shall reduce each tax rate levied by the taxy dis, taxing district if necessary, so that the total amount of taxes levied for that year against the real properties contained in the duplicate for that rate does not exceed the total amount it levied on the properties in the preceding year. Each tax rate shall be fixed at a figure that will accomplish this purpose, 53PA Consolidated Statute, section 8823. And whereas for provisions, for purposes of complying with the requirements of the consolidated county assessment law, the township of Havreford hereby desires to fix preliminary tax rate for tax year 2021 on all real properties located in the township that were sold in revenue neutral tax revenues equal to the amount of real property taxes levied by the township for tax year 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the board of commissioners of the township of Havreford as follows. One, for the 2020 tax year, the township levied a real estate property tax of 8.487 mils on all real properties located in the township, which resulted in the levying of taxes on real properties in the aggregate amount of $26,827,109. Two, the county has notified the township that as a result of the county wide reassessment completed in 2020, effective as of the 2021 tax year, all real estate located within the township has an aggregate assessed value of $6,360,012,575. Three, the $26,827,109 aggregate 2020 taxes levied on real properties in the township divided by the $6,360,012,575 2021 aggregate assessed value of all real properties in the township results in a preliminary revenue neutral tax rate for tax year 2021 of 4.218 mils. Four, the 2021 preliminary revenue neutral real property tax rate is hereby fixed at 4.218 mils. Resolved this 14th day of December, 2020, township of Havreford.
We get a second.
That's second, and I'm thrilled I didn't have. We have to read.
You to move the motion so we can get it seconded, but that's good reading.
Yeah.
You said read the resolution.
Yeah, now to make the motion, actually. Okay, great. Do we have a, with maiden seconded? Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilia.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item E, ordinance 2917.
Spoiler alert, this is going to be the same village. I move we adopt ordinance number 2917 of 2020, fixing the tax rate for the year 2021 at 4.218 mils.
Second.
Motion made in second for the same reasons. Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Demilia.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Holmes, one last one, please. Number F.
Budget appropriations, Mr. President, I would move we adopt ordinance number 2918 of 2020, appropriating the funds established to be required for the specific purpose of financing the municipal government for the year 2021, including all taxes, fees, service charges, and other revenue sources provided within all funds.
Second.
Motion made in second. Well done. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Berman.
Mr. Demilia.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Congratulations, Ms. Cutterson and Mr. Berman and.
Indeed.
A lot of hard work goes in behind the scenes to, to do this budget, to get it ready, to get it approved, to defend it and make it known to us. So thank you very much for the hard work, Amy and Dave and Larry, you too. So thank you very much to everybody, and all the commissioners. We appreciate it.
And to the department heads who did a very good job of getting their requests into, to our management and to everybody who contributed to this budget process in what I hope is a once in a lifetime year. So thank you all.
Thank you. That concludes the budget portion of the meeting. We'll now move to the regular meeting of the board of commissioners. Any commissioner committee update?
Well, the finance committee will be meeting a year from now to talk about the 2020, 2022 budget. So.
Right. So township auditor update, let's see.
Hey, guys. Well, first, I just want to start off by saying, you know, if I notice any large items and expenditures for audio equipment for Zoom meetings, I won't be shocked. They won't bet an eye. But anyways.
Appreciate that.
I reviewed the expenses and warrants for this meeting. I found no irregularities and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. In addition, I reviews, I reviewed the proposed 2021 budget and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. The budget properly counts for the revenue and expense expectations for 2021. And it properly, it tries to make, it probably accounts for the biggest unknown in 2021, which is the impacts of COVID-19 and how it will impact our revenue.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Next, then, is our township manager update?
Thank you. Currently, we have nine employees that are either quarantined or isolating due to COVID-19, two who have currently tested positive, four that had some exposure, potential exposure, may have traveled, and three that are symptomatic awaiting test results. Leaf collection season is going to be interrupted this week. And now for a weather update, I'd like Mr. Quinn to step forward, please. If anybody doesn't know what I'm talking about, you can check out social media.
Face fuck, yeah.
So a couple of reminders for the snow emergency. We're going to prepare now for heavy snow on Wednesday into Thursday. Strong winds are expected. There may be power outages followed by even colder temperatures later in the week. We ask you to park in your driveway if you can, not on the streets. Clear your sidewalks within 24 hours. And if you can, adopt a fire hydrant so you can clear the snow for our volunteer firefighters. In case there is a fire, they can get the water as quickly as possible. Don't plow or shovel your snow.
You know, I was wondering, in, in big storms such as this, as you know, Mr. Berman, residents want to get out and start removing the snow. And you know, obviously they start at the end of their driveway when the township hasn't completed, you know, removing snow, they're still working. So I, I don't recall, and my colleagues can correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken, but I, I thought this came up at one point and that we would do a better job of communication, communicating to the residents when they should go out, when we've really finished for the night and they can go out. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Does anybody remember that? I don't know who said, yep, but I'm. Yes. Bill, you remember that, Bill?
I do recall trying to do that. It's, it's, it just depends on the time of the storm and when it happens, I guess, is the, a lot of these times our crews are out in the middle of the night, which makes it tough to notify, but but I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Berman there.
Yeah, I, I'll be meeting with our, with our public works and emergency management folks first thing in the morning. And we'll be communicating some of that to the residents, Mr. Demilio. Makes very good sense to, to stay ahead of this and to get the information to the residents as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So our crews have already been working to change the equipment over for winter weather operations. We've removed speed bumps in the township that were placed temporarily for the Ardmore Avenue Bridge project. And so our curbside leaf collection is scheduled to resume next week. Residents who do have leaves in their gutter line currently might want to consider moving them so that we don't get any blockages of the water as the snow melts. Next part of my report is following up on the Darby Creek Trail expansion, the acquisition of 1744 Vermont Road. All of this has been proposed, and I've been working with Mr. Pinoni and Mr. Barrett on a presentation that I think Mr. Barrett is going to give to the board to give you some clarity on the numbers. So let me see if I could share my screen. And now, Mr. Barrett, whenever you're ready, you can.
Okay. Yeah, at the last meeting, some of the commissioners had asked for estimates on the cost of what the township was proposing. The first screen, if David can move to the next screen, is the acquisition of, actually, if you can go past those two, Dave, you can go back to them. Yeah, the order of magnitude for the cost estimate for the acquisition of Vermont Road and the construction of a ten-foot-wide paved trail from the Darby Creek Trail that's currently ends at Merry Place to Warrior Road at the edge of the township at Warrior and Vermont Roads. So the property acquisition was three hundred thousand, and the trail extension worked out through our engineer, the cost estimates were eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a total cost of one point one six five million. And the breakdown of those, that funds works, the first item you see at the top is the two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars from the proceeds of the sale of five ninety-nine Glendale. The second item you see is a grant that we are, the Friends of Haverford Trails are giving us, giving the township for thirty thousand dollars, and then the next three budget, the next three lines are capital planning and funding. So coming up to a total of the township share of one point one three five million out of the one point one six five million. And again, the difference in thirty thousand there is the money acquired through the Haverford Trails grant. The second option is a modified scope of the trail. We, myself and a member of the Haverford Trails and a member of Pinoni's team who had helped prepare the Darby Creek Trail study, walked the trail and tried to figure out if there's ways that we could utilize some existing trails that are going through Merry Place, bring the trail a little closer to Glendale Road, and maybe save some money. And we came up with a plan that would cut down the cost of the trail roughly on the order of a little over three hundred thousand dollars. So that's what you're seeing now, the cost went down, differentiating one point one six five and eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, and eight hundred and seventeen thousand comes from a property acquisition of, again, three hundred thousand, and the trail extension at five hundred and seventeen thousand. The proposed sources of funding are similar to the last slide that we showed you, which again is the two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars from the sale of the five ninety-nine Glendale, trail grant from the Friends of Haverford Trails, and then a combination, it looks like, of four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of capital funding for a total of seven hundred and eighty-seven five township contribution, and the balance being the thirty thousand dollars. When we, when we came upon the possibility of the acquisition of the property, the township looked into grant opportunities that may help the township fund these, this acquisition and construction. So in September, we filed a DCED grant, the Department of Community and Economic Development multimodal grant, which was a seventy-thirty for the property acquisition. At that point, the value was put at two hundred and sixty thousand, so that hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars would be seventy percent of that total. The seventy-eight thousand dollar local match would have been from the proceeds from five ninety-nine Glendale. And then the total township cost, you see those two township costs, which are reflected in the two alternative trails, the one that the engineers had initially priced out, and then the one where we tried to save some money by using existing pathways and township forces. The second grant that's listed here is a DCNR grant. I'm sorry, that's not, it's a DVR PC grant, that's a mistake on that slide, I apologize. The construction grant is through the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and that grant amount applied for was three hundred thousand dollars with a hundred thousand dollar local match. Again, the matching funds on this are from the proceeds of the sale of five ninety-nine. And then again, those two bottom figures, total cost option one, total cost option two, reflect the different prices of the trails depending on how we position and site the trail. Okay. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't know if the board wants to discuss that later when you're considering the motion or.
It's involved in the total cost, so we'll discuss it when it's moved.
Okay, I had a little bit more on my report. So the relationship between the Board of Commissioners and the township, hold on a second.
A little bit more on my report. I want to talk about the relationship between the Board of Commissioners and the Township Manager. Of course, the residents elect a commissioner to represent a specific ward, and the Board of Commissioners works together to establish priorities and policies, and they hire the Township Manager and the staff to implement those policies. My job is to make sure that the services we provide conform with the board's priorities and policies. So one particular area of clarity in my time here has been the board's desire to continue working towards the ideals of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Certainly, the board has taken steps in the past in that regard. They adopted the Human Relations Commission, established the Human Relations Commission and adopted an ordinance for reasonable accommodations, and they're just a couple of the initiatives the board has taken over the years. But it's hard to talk about the challenges with diversity and inclusion and bigotry and racism and anti-Semitism and misogyny and all other forms of discrimination. But I know the board wants us to continue this work, especially after the incidents we saw across the country this year, and including the large and very peaceful march that took place here in Haverford Township on June seventh. I know that the community, based on the feedback, is committed to those ideals that value all people, and I'm not aware of any specific incidents of phrases, racism, that have occurred during my time here, but that doesn't mean that we can't do better. So in addition to ordinary best practices during twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, we're going to take a couple of approaches to diversity and equity and inclusion. So we've arranged, in the first approach, for our licensed showings of the movie Walking While Black: Love is the Answer. It's a means of bridging the gap between police officers and members of the community. Our first showing is going to include the police chief and members of his command staff and several influential members of the community, including hopefully a couple of the commissioners. The movie will be followed by an opportunity for constructive dialogue about the movie and the personal experiences, personal experiences of those watching it. The purpose is to improve communication and understanding for all who live here in Haverford Township. Love is the Answer movement is about putting four steps into action. One, learn about others. Two, open your heart to them. Three, volunteer to be a part of the solution in their life, and four, empower others to do the same. The ultimate goal is to wipe out racism and division in every form. So we plan to conduct additional showings over the course of the year, mostly virtual, with members of the Police Department, township staff, Board of Commissioners, and yes, interested citizens. We're not sure exactly how this is going to look, but each showing will close with the dialogue. Again, the attendees will be encouraged to discuss their personal feelings in a non-threatening way. A second prong of this approach is continuing the facilitated learning conversations that we started last year with the fire companies. This next phase is going to include additional representation from the township, township staff, board members hopefully will join us, the Police Department. These conversations will focus on the ways in which racism and other discriminatory practices manifest themselves and our individual and collective responsibility to support the board's priorities and policies. So I hope that these conversations will lead to better communication, more understanding, and further reflection and discussion in the entire community. Also, as part of our diversity, equity, inclusion effort, the Police Department has published their entire policy manual online. Although certain chapters have been redacted in the interest of officer and public safety, residents can view the policy manual at www.haverfordtownship.org/directives. Likewise, the Police Department will publish annual arrest and use of force statistics, including details on race. Retroactive data will be published soon, with future reports to be published annually. Going forward, our goal will be to focus on, well, continue focusing on fair and impartial provision of essential public services in a culturally inclusive workplace and a culturally inclusive community. So as we near the end of two thousand and twenty, and hopefully a really tough year with the pandemic and all the turmoil we've seen, on behalf of all the Township employees, I want to wish the board and the residents a safe, happy, and healthy holiday season, and I'd be glad to answer questions if there are any.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Mr. Berman? Thank you for the initiative. Next item is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of November ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
I have a correction. In the area on the Brookline School presentation, it states that we spoke with a developer who proposed use senior apartments, and that's not accurate. The developer who looked at it felt described it as a site for apartments, and during our conversation, we discussed possibly senior housing, but that was not what the developer had done. And also, the minutes reflect that the Ahha Committee was going to continue meeting, and there are no plans for that committee to continue meeting. We are, the committee was set up to report back to the board.
Okay. We'll make those corrections. Any other corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November ninth, two thousand and twenty, and the preliminary budget meeting minutes of November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, accepting the changes suggested by Commissioner Hart.
Okay, we've already approved the budget meeting minutes in the first part of the meeting, so this.
Okay, all right.
The regular meeting minutes with the corrections of November ninth, two thousand and twenty. Mr. D'Amelio has made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oliva. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item nine is the approval of warrants.
Mr. President, it's fair to my move that we approve warrant number twelve, two thousand and twenty, totaling seven million, five hundred twelve thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars, twelve cents, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for November twelfth, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of six hundred thirty-four thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and nine cents. General sewer fund payroll for November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of six hundred fifty-three thousand dollars, seven, seven hundred seventy-one and sixty-four cents. General sewer fund disbursements number twelve, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of four million, two hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifteen cents. General sewer fund disbursements number twelve of two thousand and twenty, in the amount of five hundred seventy thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and forty-eight cents. Community development block grant fund disbursement number twelve, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of ninety thousand, one hundred five dollars and twenty-one cents. Capital project fund disbursements number twelve of two thousand and twenty, in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred five dollars and sixty-five cents. Debt service on the Series twenty, twenty, interest in the amount of ninety-five thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars and two cents. Series two thousand and eighteen, interest in the amount of six hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, and Series two thousand and sixteen, principal and interest in the amount of three hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars, twenty-five cents, and a credit card statement ending November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Motion made in second. Any questions?
Mr. Anderson reviewed all these. Any questions he had were answered to his satisfaction. He recommends the approved, be approved as to I.
Mr. Berman, would you please call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item ten, P twenty-four, two thousand and twenty.
Mr. President, ordinance number P twenty-four, two thousand and twenty, changing the Shagtry Commission term, it's the second reading, it's a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P twenty-four, two thousand and twenty, authorizing a term change from five years to three years.
Second. Second, questions? I believe we discussed it.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item eleven, ordinance P twenty-five, two thousand and twenty, it's the second reading for traffic.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P twenty-five, two thousand and twenty, amending traffic restrictions on the following highways, parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times, amend to read Pinzon Avenue East from Westchester Pike to Columbus Avenue, and special purpose parking in front of two-two-two-eight Bridmore Avenue.
Second.
Questions? If you have questions, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item twelve is the first reading for traffic.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty, establishing traffic restrictions on the following highways, special purpose parking established in front of four oh-two Steel Road and in front of twenty-nine forty-five Oakford Road, parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times on Crest Road North Side from Dover Road to a point forty feet west.
Second.
Motion made in second. Questions?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item thirteen, Mr. D'Amelio.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-one, further amending Chapter one thirty-six, Police Services.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions? Explanation? If they want to tell the public what this is.
Yeah.
Berman, Mr. Berman will explain it.
The, the Police Department often provides services to outside entities for traffic control and crowd control, and this ordinance provides for additional protection for the police officers who, who commit to provide those services in the event those services are canceled.
Could we, could you be more specific? Could we clarify this? This, this is for the police to be put on extra duty for public safety purposes when a large event is planned, so it may have a private basis, but this isn't, these aren't private entities hiring our police department. These are private entities whose, or, whose, whose event requires extra police presence. Do I have that right, Chief?
Partially correct, Commissioner. Partially correct, Commissioner. This is also for utility services as they open roads and operations like that where it's required to have a police officer present during road closures.
Okay, but my point is, there was that bad press in the last couple of months about involving the pipeline project going through southeastern Pennsylvania and, you know, sheriffs and other people being employed by, you know what I mean? And that created a great deal of storm and drawing, and obviously, that's not what we're talking about here.
Oh, no. Every, every detail, extra duty detail that comes through the police department, we see what it is first, and anything that may be questionable is brought to our attention. But most of them are for big events such as Haverford Township Day, things like that that we do, but for the utilities mostly, and they're, they're pretty standard. But we never get involved with all the details that would be questionable. That's 100% correct.
Okay. And I didn't think you would. I just wanted to make sure that that people understood that that was what was going on here.
Thank you for the explanation.
Just to, just to further that, that point, though, when, when you have the events such as this, you work with coordinators of large events like music festivals or Haverford Township Day to determine how many police officers are needed and for adequate security, right?
That, that's correct. We always have discussions for any large event, whether it be public or private. Obviously, the public ones, we're involved in, we know what the planning stages are. But when it gets involved with the music festivals and things like that, we always have conversations. And there is a criteria or model we use for how many police officers for the number of people. But as a rule, it usually works out well for us and for the person who's sponsoring the event.
Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Thanks, everyone, for helping to clarify that. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 14. Or Holmes.
Yes. Thank you. Amending chapter, I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance number P 30 of 2021, further amending Chapter 30 pensions and employee benefits.
Second. Second by Mr. Aliva.
Ms. Cuthbertson, could you describe this?
There was two changes that we made, and we had to codify into, with this being an ordinance, we have to get into our general code, and they both pertain to the police pension plan, and they have an aspect of their plan to refer to as a drop. There's a drop option where an officer can retire and freeze their pension while they continue to work for the next few years. It used to be capped at 36 months, and that was lengthened to 60 months, so an officer can enter drop, have their pension frozen for the next 60 months while they continue to work out. And that helps with planning purposes for the police department with personnel, as well as helps the officer plan financially for his or her own retirement. The other change we made was to the age. Again, with the drop plan, there used to be a requirement of, you, officer had to be 53 years of age with 25 years of service, and as part of the negotiation with the police contract, we reduced that at the request, at the request of the, the police department down to 52 years of age with the same 25 years of service.
Ms. Cuthbertson, sometimes when people hear drop, they just think of the horror stories that came out of Philadelphia in the last decade about, you know, people collecting a pension and then going back and collecting a salary. But can you explain to folks that the drop program across the board is a, is a cost-saving and excellent program, especially for our municipality, for planning purposes and for cost-saving purposes?
Yes, and you just summed it up pretty succinctly in Philadelphia. I know that did get a pretty bad rap when it came out a few years ago, and it was a very new concept a few years ago where, and I certainly don't want to speak for those folks in Philadelphia, but essentially, somebody retired and then did come back with a, a different job. That is not allowed in this drop plan with our police department. Once they retire and exit drop, now no longer than five years after drop entrance, they are, they are finished with employment at the township. Once an officer makes the option to enter drop, they also cannot change their mind and, you know, want to backpedal or anything like that. The decision is not changeable. So once it's made, it's made. So we do encourage all the officers to think it through first before they do make that election. And yes, it does. It, it, like I mentioned earlier, it freezes their pension five years prior, or maximum of five years prior to when they leave, leave our employment. So there is a cost-effective measure to that, and more of a planning purpose, as I alluded to earlier, when we know ahead of time that officers are leaving the employment, management and the chief can plan accordingly with, whether it's with testing and/or having to update our eligibility list or things like that. So there's a, a planning benefit and a financial benefit, and a benefit to the officer as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 15, 31, 2021.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P 30, 31, 2021, authorizing the acquisition of 1744 Vermont Road, Haverford, PA, subject to review and acceptance by the township solicitor for the agreement and for further subject to the approval of the township manager of the final agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis.
Oh, I think I beat Mr. Lewis to that one.
No, I think I beat you.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let's go back to the tape. I want to see that one.
Replay.
I think, I think, I think I won that one.
Get it on YouTube and let's go down.
Let's not talk about going to the tape.
President.
There came up, I'm, I'm sorry, Dan, could I, could I just ask one question for clarification? Earlier, Mr. Kerr spoke and said that there was a, this would complete an uninterrupted stretch of the, of the trail all the way to Barnabes. Is that correct? Well, I thought we were still missing parts of this trail.
That's correct. No, it would go from McDonald Field all the way to Barnabes.
So what is, what, I, we've spoken in the past about other gaps.
It's from Barnabes, after Barnabes.
Yeah, there's, there's further gaps between Barnabes and the crack.
From Barnabes to the crack?
Right.
Sorry, Mr. Siegel.
Yeah, I just want to clarify a couple of things, and I don't know who can answer these questions. First, this ordinance, as it's written, only is to approve the purchase of the property. Is that correct?
As written, yes.
Okay. We've seen earlier tonight, we discussed last week, the other, what I'll call options for this area and the trail with applications that have been submitted for grants, but we don't have before us, am I correct, anything where we have to approve, disapprove, act on any of those options now? Is that correct?
Correct.
And none of those, are those options in the capital budget? Where do they stand?
Ms. Cuthbertson.
Provision for those options are in the capital projects fund, but what the board eventually decides to do will be at that particular time when you award contracts and the like.
And my understanding here is that we're acquiring a property because we need a 20-foot wide area for an easement? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the current owner has not agreed to provide that easement up to the present? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So why are we hearing, I don't know if it was Mr. Kerr, I don't want to attribute it to someone incorrectly, he was saying this homeowner's been cooperative, they weren't cooperative with providing that. Is that correct?
I think in 2014, we had, there was a preliminary agreement when the, the current owner purchased the property to, to grant an easement, but after she moved into the property, she decided she did not want to grant the easement. So she's been cooperative at this point in the sense that she has wanted to make, rather than to put the, the property on the market, she has wanted to try to negotiate with the township.
So she's cooperative because she wants to sell a property that floods all the way up to the first floor to us? That's what I'm gathering, correct?
She's selling the prop, we are purchasing the property. That's correct.
And it has flooded up to the first floor in the past or recently?
I don't know if we know that definitely. It's flooded, but.
It's a required closure under the Pennsylvania real estate law. We, it's disclosed or not.
I think it's in the basement mostly, wasn't it?
It's in the basement. It's not, never been the first floor that I, that I know of. It's in the basement.
Well, that's a homeowner disclosure, not a disclosure from anyone on this board.
Why are you asking us that?
Well, because it had to have been disclosed to us as part of an agreement of sale of a residential property in Pennsylvania, and it can't be disclosed by any of us. It has to be disclosed by a homeowner or a person with authority to sell the property.
So the question is, did they disclose that to the township? Is that what you're asking?
What did they disclose?
Okay, Dave?
I think Kelly.
Kelly?
The agreement of sale actually hasn't been signed yet. Can you all hear me? So I'm not sure, Dave, have you seen a seller's disclosure? If not, when we do sign or present our offer, I can request those disclosures.
Frankly, I don't remember seeing a seller's disclosure. Amy, I don't know if you remember seeing it?
No, I definitely did not see a seller's disclosure.
I'll request it.
Yeah, it's required, and spirit courts have heard that many times. Okay. That's all I have.
We're, we're, we're authorizing buying this property for 300 grand right now. We haven't even seen the seller's disclosure. Am I hearing that correctly?
We're authorizing, I guess, entering into the agreement of sale. We haven't even entered into, or she hasn't accepted an agreement of sale. There's no signed agreement of sale at this point.
But we can get out of a signed agreement of sale if the seller's disclosure has anything in it we don't like, right?
Correct. There is a due diligence period, which wouldn't run until after the January meeting, after the second reading of this ordinance.
And I'm, I'm relying on the wording of the ordinance, subject to review and acceptance by the township solicitor and further subject to the approval of the township manager. And I'm hoping our township solicitor and manager would be conscientious in looking at any disclosures and advising us of such.
Understood.
I still can't believe we're talking about kind of, spending the kind of money we're talking about here to do what amounts to, and somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, 100 feet of trail, how many feet of trail is being done for 700, $800,000? And we're going to buy a property that we know is bad with the idea of a split board here as to whether we're just going to knock down the property and make it all public land or whether we're going to turn around and flip the house?
Mr. Holmes, I think, you know, in Mr. Kerr's presentation, one of the things, the, in order to extend the trail, the alternative to buying this property is to build two bridges, one going across the, and the other back over, which would cost over a million dollars just for the bridges, not for the trail.
I have no intention of building a, a bridge over. But we didn't, we did, nobody investigated, nobody investigated the issue of, of us doing a taking, which is, this really is the, is the, is the, is the perfect example of where a government should do a taking, when somebody, when somebody backs out on an agreement they made six years ago that we, we kind of relied on, and we only are looking for a strip of property, and long before we have to go through the formal issue of taking this, we'd be able to negotiate with this person. So the idea, the idea that this person is now being cooperative because, because this owner is getting $300,000 for this property from us, I mean, you'd find me amazingly cooperative if, if you guys offered me $300,000 for my house to put a 20 feet of, of path across the back. So I, I just.
Mr. Holmes, before you just were throwing money away, the property was appraised, the, so it wasn't that we didn't look at the cost, we have appraisals.
And the appraisal wasn't 300,000 bucks?
Yeah, but it's being supplemented by, by, by the friends of the.
So we're overpaying it with somebody else's donated money.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, the taxpayer, the taxpayers are not overpaying. That's the bottom.
Taxpayers may not be, but these other people who donate it to.
They're doing it very generously, because they think it's obviously important to our.
They see the value.
They see the value of doing this.
They may see the value.
100% supportive.
Nobody, nobody has investigated, despite my request, nobody has investigated what it costs to, for us to impose an easement on this or do this by a partial taking. Nobody's done that evaluation. Nobody's seen what, what any similar properties in the past have cost townships. Nobody's engaged in that. It seems like nobody has the.
It seems to me that's appropriate when, when you, you cannot buy the property, maybe. So here you have a situation where you can buy it at, at the appraised value, and another group, the friends of the Haverford Trails have stepped forward to supplement our offer.
So why, why? Why would we see something like that? If we could do this, if we could do this for $100,000, why, if we could do this for a taking for $100,000, why would we ever spend 300 and have no liability in the future for a property that floods?
Well, I, I don't believe that, that's the appropriate use of seizing private property. That's my.
But actually, I mean, look, we did, why? We have fewer members of the Y than we have the 70,000 people that went on this trail. We have, we have double the use of the trail this year than we had last year. I mean, I, I, I can't think of a more public purpose, and I can't think of a better example of where a taking would be appropriate, where somebody is just holding out unreasonably, and we have something where the overwhelming amount of the, of the township could use this. And we're not talking about taking somebody's entire property. We're talking about taking the back to extend a trail. Because it happens all the time.
If you take the back of the property, you're taking out the whole, I mean, literally from. What, what do you mean, I don't know what?
You don't, we don't, we don't know the cost, we don't know the value. We, nobody, no engineer, engineer this and told us, you, you take this back of the property.
Let me finish, because you're, you're interrupting me and not letting me finish my point. Okay? I allowed you to speak, so allow me to speak. The value of the house, if you take, if you take the grounds and the backyard of that house, that house has a, has a, a, a road right in front of it, and it, if you take the back half of that property, you're taking it almost to make a 20-foot walkway, you're taking it almost to the, to the back of the house. So that house would have absolutely no property and have no value. So if you're taking, if you're taking that property, you're going to have to pay that person for that, and that person could make an argument in court saying that, that you're, you are, you're, you're, by taking that 20, by taking that 20-foot walkway, you are devaluing their property. You're making their property worthless.
Yeah.
And then we would be in court and spending several hundred thousand, or spending several hundred thousand dollars to, or several thousand dollars to, to, to fight this and to do a taking as we did with, how many years did we start doing the taking over at, at the Y? And how much money was spent? Five, half a million dollars?
Wasn't that much. It wasn't even nearly half a million dollars. Wasn't even, wasn't even close to half a million dollars. And Mario, identify, identify one piece of expert.
It was close to half a million dollars.
Please, just, just for my, for my edification, please tell me, any expert that gave you that opinion, tell me any appraiser, tell, show me a report that said if we take that property, you wipe out the value of the property. And then explain to me how we're going to flip over.
I don't think you need to.
That's what we do, so that's, so we don't rely on experts, we just have to go look at it ourselves, like when you guys.
No, you don't. Mario was saying. You can just be, you can just be logical, you can just look at it and say, I don't need an expert to tell me that, that a light is on. I mean, I don't need to have an engineer come to tell me that the light is on. You look at the back of that property, you can see that the house is totally worthless when you take the back off of it.
Because you're qualified to make that determination.
I'm not qualified to make that terminate, determination.
So we're spending $300,000 because you think. So we're spending $300,000 because you think it would cost us more to condemn it than it would be to just buy it.
Right, I'm just.
You are correct. Yes, that is correct, Larry.
Okay, but based on your, based on you walking in the backyard and making that determination.
Yes, on my opinion, I believe that it's going to cost us more to litigate a taking than it would be to do that.
Did you ask?
Just, and just to back you, back it up, it did, we did spend half a million dollars in the taking of the other proper, in, uh, in the litigation of. Of, um. Of the correct, of the. Of the Y.
Did this board ever get advice on what's the likelihood of success in a taking with this, this would be? And I don't have to violate attorney client privilege because I know we didn't get that advice because nobody authorized asking for it. We don't have any professional advice on whether or not a taking would be successful here. We don't have any financial advice as to what would cost more. And we're spending, we're overspending. We're spending more money on this property. And that $259,000 from 599 Glendale and that money from that trail, from that organization, that money could be used to fix a lot of other things. That, that along that trail way, we still have an area between Barnabes and, and the crack that isn't done. And these folks are going to say yippee when it, when the, the longer we wait, the more the township's going to pay for it. So this is the precedent we're setting now is that we'll pay you 10% more than your appraised value and we'll find somebody to help us give us the money. So we can get the next property. I think this is a disastrous idea. And I obviously I've been against it from the start and I don't think I'm going to talk anybody out of this, but I, I haven't. I, I just, I just told the fire department, they don't get to get a dollar. And we're talking about a million dollars on a stretch of park. And, and this is not the right time to do it. And, and, and we do not have sufficient information. To actually do our job, which is determine the cheapest, best way to accomplish what we're trying to do for our public purposes.
I, I just, I disagree with you. So could we please call the roll?
You, you don't get to cut off debate like that.
I want to make my comment first. I. Mario, I think you just convinced me of something. By, by building, by buying this house. And putting a path behind it, we're going to render the house worthless is what you just said.
Yeah, but, but the fact is, it's not going to be worthless to somebody. Because people buy houses along the Pennsylvania Turnpike, right on the Turnpike. Okay? You think people want, buy, somebody's going to buy that property even though it doesn't have a backyard to it. There's, they're going to have a backyard, just going to have an easement attached to it. So it, it does have that, it does have value, but who knows what it is?
Substantially.
Point is, we need, the point is, we need, we need the easement and the, the best way to do it, I think, is to buy it, not take it. You, you, you don't take something, you used eminent domain, the right to take property should be used as a absolute, absolute last resort.
I agree with.
We don't have to do that.
What is this? But a last resort is just, it's $300,000. I don't know what would be a last resort.
No, our last resort would be, we, we also applied for a multimodal grant to. Make the white, put a sidewalk there and a recreation path along the road as well too. So. See what happens. Anyway, any other comments? Mr. Berman, would you please call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Berman's muted. I didn't hear him.
He's calling for your vote, Mr..
Oh, no.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Wexler.
No, as the commissioner of the ward, I say no. Thank you. Next item. Resolution number 2196 2020, 2021, meeting dates.
President.
Mr. Segal.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2196 2020, approving the 2021 Board of Commissioners and the Boards and Commissions meeting dates.
Second. Motion made in second by Mr. Quinn. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey. Muted.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes, item 17, resolution 2197 2020. Mr. D'Amelio.
I'm a sir, chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2117 2020. Township however proposes to revise. It's, uh, sewage facilities plan act 537. Planned by executing a sewage facilities planning module. For the addition of two EDUs in the Derby Creek Drainage System. Associated with the subdivision of an undeveloped parcel. Located on Greenbrier Lane, Haver Town. Known as DC Folio number 22. Oh nine dash zero one three four eight dash zero zero. Where one new building will be created. And two new single family dwellings are proposed. And that said sewage facilities planning module is hereby adopted. And the submission of the module is authorized for submission to the Department of Environmental Protection. For its approval as a revision to the official sewage facilities plan of the Township of Haverford.
Uh, Mr. D'Amelio, if I may just make one minor change to that, uh, could we, um. Look at this resolution under the condition of a few minor items that do still need to be, um, taken care of. Just some clarification about whether, um, a public notice was required by the applicant. And, um, just a few other tiny, you know, technical issues with the township engineer.
Yeah, go ahead.
Wonderful.
Kelly, I, are you done? Go ahead and make the motion. Is it, is it in second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a question. It's, it's asking the. Asking the resolutions asking for two EDUs. There's only one new house. Isn't there an existing EDU for the existing?
Um, yes, there, well, no, there's, uh, there's two new single family dwellings. Um, the existing house is, is totally separate.
So this, this has been subdivided into additional.
Right, yes. Uh, so it's one lot now. The other creating two lots, uh, with two new houses.
Okay, that wasn't clear. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Please call.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes, item 18.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution 2198 2020, approving the preliminary final minor subdivision plan for Tom Thornton for the property located at 1613 Pelham Avenue, Haver Town, Haverford Township, Delaware County, known as DC Folio number 22 dash 06 dash 1738 dash 00. Has been submitted to permit the subdivision of an existing 14,252 square foot parcel into two lots. Existing fan, single family dwelling will remain on lot one and is proposed to contain a net lot area of 6,928 square feet. Resulting in the creation of a 7,321 square foot parcel, lot two, with one new single family dwelling and associated improvements. Subject properties within the R4 zoning districts located in the sixth ward, the effort set plans. Were prepared by RKW Engineering Services of Haver Town, PA dated July 28, 2020. And last revised on November 6, 2020, subject to compliance of the planning commissioner recommendations.
Second. Second, any questions?
Mr. President, this was, uh, this was a, uh. This was a plan that generated some, uh, certainly the consternation, uh, among the neighbors, um, in the area. I think some of it was based on some misunderstanding as to what was going on at the zoning board. As Mr. President knows, I don't get involved in the zoning board of the planning commission. Issues in the sixth ward, but I just wanted to confirm with, um, Ms. Kirk, um, that at both the zoning board and the planning commission. Any constituents who, who wanted their, uh, opinions heard on these issues were, were given, uh, an opportunity there to speak, right?
Yes, um, at the time we were doing in-person meetings, but, um. You know, requesting that as many people as possible submit their, um. Their interest or comments in writing. So many of those were read at the meetings. Many of the, um, concerned neighbors did actually attend in person as well. So I, I do feel that those, uh, you know, the neighbors that were concerned or, um, wanted to comment on the project were able to do so in both meetings.
And in particular, there were concerns at the zoning board level that, um, the new property where the new construction was going to be. Was what the basis of seeking a variance was, but in reality, the variance was needed for the existing property to which they weren't making changes. Is that correct?
Correct. Uh, that is kind of a often, uh, misconstrued variance. When there's a property that's being subdivided, they want to keep the existing house. In this case, I think it's very appropriate that they were keeping the existing house to keep, um. With the neighborhood, um, in keeping with the general characteristics of the neighborhood. Um.
And the existing, the existing house had a non-conforming issue that once you subdivide, it has to be actually approved by variance.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. In order to subdivide a lot that has a house that has, um, a, a non-conformity, in this case, it was setbacks, uh, on both Pelham and Homestead. Just to subdivide it needed that variance to keep it.
Thank you.
Were there any stipulations made to appease the residents? It sounds like a lot of residents.
Um, there was, uh, some discussion about trees and, um, you know, trying to keep as much of, um, of the mature trees on the property as possible, which the planning commission was, um. You know, very keen on doing as well, uh, and the shade tree commission, um, too, where everybody was very interested in keeping, um, certain heritage trees. Um, there was some discussion about the location of the driveway, which was amended. Um, a driveway was added to, um. The existing lot where the existing driveway is being removed. Um, so both have off-street parking. Um, many of the trees are being kept. The, you know, general characteristics of the neighborhood are being maintained.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 19. Resolution 2199, Caricon Drive.
Mr. President, uh, motion to adopt resolution number 2199 2020, commencing. Sunday and only on Sunday, January 3rd, 2021, from 7:00 AM to dusk to Sunday, December 26th, 2021. And Thursday, November 25th, 2021, which is Thanksgiving, from 7:00 AM to dusk. The Board of Commissioners designate Haverford Police Department Chief John Viola to execute any documents with PennDOT. And to be responsible for the safety and welfare of residents utilizing Caricon Drive.
Second.
Uh, Mr. President, just that there's been, um. A tremendous increase in the usage of Caricon on Sundays. Since the pandemic started, um, residents started a res, a petition last month. Uh, there's been over a thousand Haverford residents who have sound, uh, signed the petition. Requesting that we close it year round, at least for 2021.
Jared, just, just to add, uh, I've gotten a lot of phone calls and, uh, emails about closing it and, uh, and this is fantastic. I think this is great. Because there is, you know, during this pandemic, a lot of people are out walking and, and that's the perfect place to do so.
And I got a lot, 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 lots of calls too about this. And when everybody saw it was on, it was on for, uh, for, uh, tonight. A lot were thrilled. I think the, I think this is great for us.
Not having it closed on Saturdays during the spring and summer?
Well, let's, let's work on Sundays.
Yeah, there's.
If PennDOT agrees to this, they're not going to give us Saturdays down the road.
Well.
Yeah, and there's, uh, look, it's, it's one thing to, uh, it's one thing to do this for 52 Sundays of the year. There are, there are some folks. In the sixth ward who have concern, concerns about the diversion of traffic. And I don't think it's an issue of the. On one day, and I don't think we have safety issues. Um, but you know, there are some folks who want to, who want to close that. Continuously through the summer or add additional days. And I think at that point we have to start balancing safety versus the convenience of folks. So as, as Commissioner Hart has said, um. We'll start with Sundays and see how that works out.
Okay, any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes, item 20. Mr. Lewis, I think. Mr. McCloskey.
Sure, uh, motion to adopt resolution number 2020. 2020 that Haverford Township hereby requests a multimodal transportation fund grant of $650,000 from Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to be used. For the improvements of the intersection located at Ardmore Avenue and Haverford Road to improve walkability and pedestrian safety. And be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby designate David R. Berman Township Manager, Secretary. As the official to execute all documents and agreements between the township and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. To facilitate and assist in obtaining the requisite requested grant.
Second.
Second, Mr. Aliva.
Yeah, just Mr. Lewis stepped away, but this is obviously we're, we're asking for a grant to improve. The safety of that intersection at Haverford Road and Ardmore Avenue. Now that the bridge is hopefully coming to a merciful conclusion. We're going to ask PennDOT to, uh. To also make improvements to that intersection, um, to make it more. Walkable and accessible for everyone.
Any date for the bridge to open yet, or is it?
I hope, I hope so.
That's, um. They have everything done. I mean, they got Gulfview repaved, Ardmore Avenue. Um, I, I walked it yesterday and I think it's. It just that it's the railing on top of the bridge. They're waiting for it to come in and they won't open it septa. I think that's a safety issue with septa. So they're not going to open the bridge until they have the railing, uh, affixed to the top of the bridge. Even though the railing for the handicap ramp is not up either. I think they're just going to close that off. Um, so they're just waiting for the. For the railing for the top of the bridge and it seems like it's been forever and. Everybody's pretty frustrated at this point after, especially after. You know, going through something similar on the College Avenue Bridge where we had a six month delay. So a lot of frustration, but hopefully it'll be worth it in the end. And, and with this, this improvement, it'll make that intersection even that much safer.
Be a great Christmas present, Tom. All right.
Exactly.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. 21 contract awards, township building and police department.
I don't know what that is.
It's the, uh, annual maintenance contracts for the HVAC and.
Mr. President.
Mr. Segal.
Motion to award a two-year full maintenance service contract, January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2022. To Tustin Mechanical Services of Norris Town in the amount of $19,200 annually for inspection, maintenance and repair services. Of the HVAC system at 1010 and the 1014 Darby Road, Haver Town.
Again.
Do we want to do both together?
Go ahead and do.
Motion also to award a two-year full service maintenance con, maintenance service contract, January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2022. To Tustin Engine Energy Solutions of Norris Town in the amount of $4,000 annually. For maintenance and programming services for the BAS system at 1010 dash 1014 Darby Road, Haver Town.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Aliva. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Steagle.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Recreation Department, Veterans Field Lighting Improvements.
Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to award the Veterans Field Lighting Improvements to Wise Electrical Contractors, Flower Town, PA, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second. We should make a second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Emilio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Upgrade the audiovisual system at the crack.
Mr. President, I'd like to authorize, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of an upgraded audiovisual system at the crack from Applied Video Technology, Kimberton, PA, under Coast Guard's contract zero-three-four-zero-thirty in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Second.
Second.
Second, can anybody tell us what the upgrade is?
Yes, the upgrade is to upgrade the sound system in the multi-use room at the crack. Also upgrade our audiovisual system there for presentations. We were having problems with our microphone. The system probably was undersized for, the original system was undersized, and we've been having some issues with portable mics and those types of things, and also presentations. So we're getting an upgrade to that software and also fixing some issues we have down in our studio with our audio down there.
Great, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Emilio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Next item is revised contract for management software.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a two-year professional services agreement for recreation management software scheduling with ActiveNet Dallas, Texas, in estimated annual amount of fifty thousand dollars based on the estimated revenues of one million or five percent of revenues.
Second.
Does that amount go up and down based on revenue, or is that a minimum?
Brian, you're muted.
The contract is based on revenue. Basically, the five percent represents credit card cost of three percent, two percent of software cost. We are currently paying six percent. So this was a savings of roughly fifteen percent on the contract that we are currently under, that we were able to renegotiate.
But if revenue is less or more, we pay either less or more, or is it?
Yes, yes.
Is there a full of fifty thousand dollars is what I guess what I'm asking?
No, no, it's all based on revenue. So if there's less revenue, like this year, our costs were less due to less revenue due to closing for the pandemic.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Emilio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Mr. Siegel. Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Next item is continuation, Assistant's Forum. Mr. Berman, are there any people on the conference that wish to speak?
Take a look. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much. New business. Is there any new business that a commissioner would want to bring up to the table?
Mr. President.
Sure.
I just didn't know whether this needed to be new business or whether we can just handle this at the January meeting. But what I discussed earlier during the budget provision about creating an ad hoc committee made up of some commissioners and some of the solar experts that we had, I'm assuming that we could put on the agenda for the organization meeting consideration of an ad hoc alternative energy committee that we could talk about at the organization meeting, perhaps invite invite interested parties and do it the next week.
Yeah, well, I'll ask Gloria to put on the agenda for the first meeting next year, and whoever is in charge of the meetings can either continue it or move it off.
But that. Why would we create another board if we have an environmental board already? Advisory board.
I don't think of this as, I don't think of this as within the purview of the Environmental Advisory Commission. That's a pretty big, I mean, that's nine-plus members who cover a lot of different things. This is very specific to this project. What?
This should be easy.
Larry, Larry, excuse me, Larry. Are you saying a subset of the board, a couple of the commissioners to do this? Or are you calling for another committee of citizens?
I think what he's saying is the same thing that Jerry and Connor and you just did with the Brookline thing, where you have an ad hoc meeting, and you have meetings for, you know, six months, and then you report back to the board, and then that committee goes away as soon as the decision is made to either put the solar panels on there or not. So it's, because of the size of this project, I think, what Commissioner Holmes, and I don't want to speak for you, but it's just to have a temporary.
You're doing a fine job.
A temporary committee made up of a couple commissioners who are interested and a couple residents who are involved and may have some expertise to report to us on such a large-scale purchase.
But I don't think we need to bring that before the board. I think we can just do it, right?
I think it's a great idea. I think.
Well, yeah, but I think we should, I think we should act publicly. I mean, I think we should appoint, I think some of the people who advised us on, you know, who advocated for this should be appointed by us to serve on this ad hoc committee that's whose existence is solely for the purpose of getting us information and ultimately putting information in front of the entire board to make the decision about the first project. For instance, what's the best property to do it? Who are the manufacturers out there that do this stuff? Getting advice early from our financial advisors. So I think our financial advisors should be part of this committee.
It's a great idea. Have Gloria.
Yeah, no, it's fantastic.
Gloria, to put it on the agenda. We should do this publicly. It should be in January.
Right. It'd be like the ad hoc committee.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think, can you do it at the reorganization, or does it have to be at the voting meeting?
I think it has to be at the voting meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think it's a great idea. I'm all for it.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Any other new business? Okay, other business. Mr. Emilio.
You know, just go back to the volunteer firefighters. I appreciate everything they do, as I know this board does. Historically, years ago, when we had a fire marshal, he would ask the chiefs about any of their needs for the fire companies. That really hasn't happened, and I hope we do that next fall when we begin the budget process, is to have a dialogue with the air of fire. Make sure that their voice is heard. I want to wish everyone also a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year. Let's hope that the new year is much better than what we've, what we are currently going through. And it's been difficult on first responders, nurses, doctors, hey, even public works employees. It's no wonder that we're getting the service that we're getting and the dedication. So thank you, everyone, for everything that you're doing during this pandemic and wish for health and peace in the coming year.
Thank you, Mr. Emilio. Mr. Oliva.
I'd like to reiterate the thanks, the happy holidays to everyone from, you know, from myself. What a, it has been a difficult year now, looking, looking back at this this year, and this being our last meeting of the year. I just want to say what a, you know, what a good job. You know, Bill, you've done a great job as President of the Board, taking us through a really tough time, and the board itself. We had to deal with a lot of issues, and our staff was just incredible this year dealing with this pandemic and just not knowing what to do, how to handle it, and our emergency services, people did a fantastic job. I just can't, I can't say enough about everybody and how they handled themselves professionally and how we've, we really did a good job this year. You know, and the tax rate, cutting back the taxes and using our reserves to lessen the blow on the, on the public this year, because it is such an awful year. I just can't wait for twenty twenty-one for, for a new year. And hopefully, it'll be a lot better than this one was. But again, thanks to all of you, and I wouldn't want to go through it with a, with a different board. What, just what a tremendous Board of Commissioners and everybody pulled together and did a great job. So thank you all very much, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. McCluskey.
Yeah, my prayers are certainly with the Oakmont Fire Company tonight and Nick's family. You know, it's just a tragic loss of life in terms of the many tragic losses of life we have had in this country this year. But obviously, this one is close to home, and I, my prayers are with everybody at the Oakmont Fire Company who served with him, who knew him, and certainly with his family during this difficult time. I just, you know, reiterate what we've been saying for a couple of months. There was very, very positive vaccine news today. We all saw trucks rolling out into hospitals. You know, but the virus doesn't change because there was video of a trucks going and delivering packages. So try to, try to be considerate. Your neighbors work together. Wear your masks during the holiday season. Love your loved ones and love them enough to do your best. That's all we can ask everybody. Do your best to keep everybody safe. So I wish everybody happy holidays in whatever way you're going to experience them. And I just, you know, we, we've had a lot of comments and questions, and I know I've had a lot of discussions with people about police and the value of the budget and the role of Haverford Police Department. And we're going to continue to have those discussions over the next three, five years, ten years. We're going to continue to have those discussions. But I want everybody in this town to know that one of the best things we have is that Chief Viola has consistently, along with Deputy Chief Hagan, been willing to engage in those discussions and truly listen to people's points of views and react where appropriate. And I think we need to have that between us, between the residents, between the department. But know that you have people in leadership within our police department who are willing to engage in that discussion and talk about what the proper role for police is in our community, and if we need to. And I think that's a valuable, valuable thing we should, we should recognize and appreciate. And, you know, I think our budget reflects the value that we place in this police department, but also in the value that we place in every aspect of what the role of our township is. And if we're going to consider other things, we should consider adding them to the budget in the future. And I think that's an entirely appropriate conversation to have. It doesn't need to be antagonistic. It needs to be open to discussion as to what the appropriate use of our resources are. So I thank everybody that comes to the table for that discussion, and I thank the police department for their willingness to come to the table for that discussion. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey. Commissioner Siegel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually have a few things. First, I want to offer condolences to Commissioner Lewis on the passing of his mother, Marilyn. I know he's had to deal with a lengthy illness, and our thoughts are with you, Commissioner Lewis. As we go into twenty twenty-one, obviously, it is a time of change politically. But I do want to take a moment to thank our outgoing State Senator, Daleen Leach. In my tenure on this board, there has been no one in Harrisburg who has brought more money and who has done more for the issues that I care about than Senator Leach. And he has a replacement, and I wish her well. But the Blue Root Construction Grants of all different types came through his efforts. And I want him to know on my behalf that his efforts are appreciated, and I wish him well in whatever he does.
Yeah, may I echo that with you? I really found him to be just unbelievably helpful, welcoming. Didn't care what your party status was. He just was very helpful to the township. So I echo what you said. Thank you.
Thanks. I also, and I know some of my colleagues, I had an opportunity this year to see virtually the middle school presentations about ways to make Haverford greater. And the ones that I saw one Monday afternoon were superb. And I hope there is an opportunity, whether we do it however we do it or whenever we're, again, together, for us to share with the community some of those presentations. They were very impressive, very well thought out, and I was very impressed with what I saw. As we reach the end of the year, it's always hard to know what to say during the holiday season, and no year hopefully will ever be like twenty twenty. And I was trying to come up with, what do you say? And then I realized that behind me, I've spent most of this year right here in the kitchen working. And there is a plaque that was given to my wife, and there's a, with on it is a prayer called "The Blessing for the Home," or in Hebrew, the Beir Khat Habaite. And the blessing on that plaque really, I think, for all of us who have spent most of our time at home, really comes through. And I'm going to just, it's a five-line prayer, but I think it's very apt now. Let no sadness come through this gate. Let no trouble come to this dwelling. Let no fear come through this door. Let no conflict be in this place. Let this home be filled with blessing and peace. And I really think that that is a great message for our time and for what we've gone through and what hopefully will be a better twenty twenty-one. And finally, I'm going to make a personal announcement. Members of the board, the township staff, and most importantly, to the residents of Haverford Township. I speak tonight about a matter that has been on my mind for some time. First, I want to highlight what should be an obvious point. The offices we hold as commissioners are not ours to hold indefinitely. We're not here simply to mark time. Sustained incumbency is certainly not the point of seeking office. And there are times when we must choose not to seek reelection and to instead honor our principles. Now is such a time for me. There are a number of issues of particular relevance that have influenced my decision. First, it's my belief that this township is under excellent leadership, including Township Manager Dave Berman, Assistant Township Manager Amy Cuthbertson, Police Chief John Viola, Director of Emergency Medical Services Jim McCanns, and all of the senior staff, who I believe are ideally situated to take this community further. Second, many of us on this board have highlighted the need for diversity on this board by sex, by race, and by our faiths. Yet the power of incumbency means that absent new openings, this board is likely to stay in its non-diverse state. Third, numerous events have emphasized to me that there are other issues for which I must devote myself, primarily to end the hatred, the anti-Semitism, and the divisiveness that we have seen locally and throughout the country. Fourth, I hold leadership positions in many organizations, from the Delaware County Bar Association to the American Bar Association, as well as with many other groups outside my profession, all of which demand my time. To that end, I am announcing tonight that my service on the Board of Commissioners will conclude at the end of my term in early January twenty twenty-two. During twenty twenty-one and beyond, I will continue to devote my time to end what some have regrettably described as the new normal. That is, we must work hard to end all forms of hate. I will continue to voice my opinions here and to use all. I will continue to voice my opinions here and to use all of my efforts to assure that this board continues to move the township forward while being fiscally responsible. After my term concludes, I hope to remain active and focus on serving Haverford Township and Delaware County in other ways. None of us here is indispensable. And it is time for this board to again include women and to include minorities and other representatives of our increasingly diverse community. I look forward to my final year as commissioner, and I thank our residents for your support over the past 12 years. Thank you.
Siegel, thank you very much for your comments and good luck on what must have been a difficult decision and thank you for your service and your continued service into 2021. We certainly appreciate your your views, your expertise on helping relationships and your honesty and your everything that you bring to this to this board. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Lewis.
First, thank you to the board for your condolences. Appreciate it very much. Also, just want to echo the President's comments about Commissioner Siegel. I want to thank him for his service. We haven't always agreed on everything, but it's always been a thoughtful, I think, honest discussion. And although I think if you look at most issues, we probably agreed on ninety five percent of things, but want to wish him well and thank him for his service and you know, look forward to working with him next year and continuing to benefit from his, you know, his skill set and leadership that he's provided to this board. So want to wish him well and look forward to working with you next year, Dan. It would be nice to have an early Christmas present with the opening of the Armored Avenue Bridge, but who who really knows at this point? Let's hope we're all ready and also be ready for Pico and Aqua and Penn not to to get out of our township, quite frankly. I think all our residents deserve a little bit of a break from from this nonstop, all these traffic detours and congestion that we all face by all these utility projects. So with that, just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season and certainly 2021 can't be any worse than 2020. So all the best to everyone for 2021. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, thank you. Just to see like get a whole year to come up with my goodbye speech for you. But in in the next thirteen months, I will look forward to the privilege of continuing to work with you. You have brought a an expertise and an exactness and a and and advocacy to this board. And it's been, it remains my privilege to serve alongside of you and to have sat next to you other than during the pandemic for quite a few of these years. I also want to repeat what Mr. Aliva said, and that is during this crazy time during this pandemic, it's been a privilege to be involved in an organization such as this township and to be one of its leaders. And to try at our local level to do everything we could at a time. If you consider that we have a pandemic at the same time we had issues in the United States with racism and 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 other, you know, things that were tearing our society apart. For us to be able to work together and help this township get through it has been has been a real privilege. And I would be remiss if I didn't also echo Mr. McCluskey's comments about our PD, about our police department. And this is important to say, when in June, when things were happening all over the United States and when we were planning a a very big, very peaceful protest in Haverford Township under the leadership of of our Chief of Police. Our police appeared that day and our police appeared that day in dress uniforms. They didn't wear shields, didn't carry sticks. They stood out there and and kept public safety and and watched as that protest went by. And I think that was an excellent example and sent a terrific message to everybody, not just in Haverford Township, but I think countrywide about the right way to embrace different ideas. So I care very much and worry very much about the militarization of our suburban police departments. And the one thing that helps me sleep at night is to know that that has affected a lot of police departments throughout the country, but I haven't seen it here. And I've been very impressed with with John and with Joe and with all the members of our force working very hard to listen and to adjust to society's changing expectations of our police departments and of our leaders. So I appreciate both your efforts to listen when people speak and and sometimes to change the way you do things because we're becoming more modern and more thoughtful. This holiday season, I just wish everybody the happiest and healthiest holidays. We can get through this if we wear our masks, if we listen to the experts, and if we all just know that we as a people are capable of getting through anything like this as long as we do it together and think of each other while we do it. So with that, I just wish peace on earth, happy holidays to all and a happy and healthy new year.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Quinn.
And and also like the point, one thing is that they said that we need more minority on of the board. And I'd like to point out that Matt, 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 or Matt, or Matt, well, well, Matt, Mario is is the only minority on of the board. So I wanted to point that out.
Thank you for pointing that out, Connor. I am the only minority on the board. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I know that you've. But, Dan, I just want to want to thank you for your years of service. And I know that when I joined the board, you had some kind, 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 kind words to or or to me and that meant they meant a lot. And thank you for your word advice and help along the way. And what was a year that was not the year that I thought my first year on this board would hail when I first was sworn, they sworn in on that night, I thought I thought it would be smooth, but no. But, Dave, Chief, Joe, like all of you guys, thank you for all of your help for this past year to help me to guide me along and to hear hearing or to hear me out on things. And thank you for all that. And 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 the other thing with the street with the snow that that's coming. So everybody who has outdoor tents, would you take them down tomorrow, tomorrow because of the wind that could, that could become coming? And I don't want to have that stuff flying, flying around. So take your tables and chairs and tents out of the street. So but without or with all that being said, I hope you guys all have a happy holidays and and it's been fun. So let's get this year done and start new and have everything fine. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I hope your second year is much better than your first. Dr. Hart.
It's been a long night at the end of a long year. I just, I do want to express my condolences to Commissioner Lewis again on the loss of his mother and to the whole Oakmont Fire Department. It's one more indication of how this COVID disease is just sort of overwhelming the country. Best of luck to Commissioner Siegel. It's been an honor to serve with you these last three years, and I'm looking forward to your expertise in the coming year. Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Let's continue to stay safe. We'll get through this. Spring's not that far away. Hopefully, the vaccine will help a good deal. So best of luck to everybody.
Thank you. I'll just add that in this trying year, I'd like to also thank the township staff, especially during this pandemic, we've we've tightened our belts. They've kept costs to a bare minimum, increases utilized personnel in trying times when families are sick or quarantined and schools were closed, make it challenging for our employees to provide the goods and services that our residents expect. I think it's a tribute to the leadership. The staff has been unbelievably accommodating to not only our request, but to all our citizens' requests. So I think we owe them a debt of gratitude. They've made our job much, much easier this year. And I can't say enough how much they've helped us to do that, whether and I'm going down to the guy that picks up my trash can every week, twice a week, to Mr. Berman and Mrs. Cuthbertson, who do the high level stuff. Every job is important, no matter what our walk in life is. And our staff and our management has proven that to every officer, every medic, every trash person, every guy that cleans out the sewer, every day when those leaves get stuck that we talk about and on and on and on. The leadership is there, the DEI initiatives that Mr. Berman talked about are a great example of the type of leadership that we've hired to be our township manager to keep this going forward. So I think we're in great shape to do that. And it's it's sad. I want to offer my condolences not only to Commissioner Lewis, your family. The tragedies are there. The pandemic has indicated we lost a great firefighter in Oakmont today. Family circumstances, your mother, God rest her soul, she lived a great life. She had great children and super life. And we wish you and your family all the condolences that we can offer. Other issues still go along, like we wish the Murphy family condolences. They lost a member of their family to the ravages of addiction this past week. And also my condolences to our neighboring Marple Newtown, Marple Police Department on the loss of one of their young officers this week. A tragic death there, thirty two year old officer with two children. So our condolences go out to not, not only them, but all four of those families that happened this week, personal tragedies there. And again, you just, it's a bad time of year, but life goes on. We have to get, keep this thing, we got to beat this pandemic, get this vaccine going and move on. So I just wish every, all of you, happy holidays and well wishes. Hopefully, you can see and hug your family members at this Christmas time. We kind of missed it at Thanksgiving. So hopefully, with quarantining and the closest of Christmas, we get to see some of our grandkids, our kids and in-laws and whatever. But so happy holidays to all of you. Thank you for your work, hard work and dedication. It was a pleasure to to run the meetings this year. So I look forward to next year and you guys can, we'll have the agendas there. So we'll seek adjournment if anybody wants to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Thank you very much. Have a great holiday, everyone.